Ed, can you hear us?
I can, yes. I just have a message that my video can't be started be because the host has stopped it. So I don't know what that means, but.
Supervisor Partridge, can you hear us?
Yes.
There we go. We got you.
I can't start my video, though. Lan is telling me that the host has stopped.
All right.
My video, whatever that means, but I'm here anyway.
A couple of puns I could be saying about that video there, Ed, but we're fixing it right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I said, if you'd like to start in the meantime, it's sufficient for the sunshine act that Mr. Partridge be able to hear and be heard in anything before the board. So as long as the video doesn't really matter is what I'm saying. If you want to start.
Ed, are you finalizing proceeding?
Yes.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the May 23, 2022 meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will announce that the board met an executive session to discuss two person, excuse me, one personnel matter and two legal matters. With that, Mr. Lafayette, please call the roll.
Chairman Altieri.
Here.
Supervisor Roberts Lycap.
Here.
Supervisor Partridge.
Here.
Supervisor Russo.
Here.
Supervisor Chanlis.
Here.
Your special counsel and engineer are here, and I will be going into the township manager tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lafayette. We'll now move down to the moment of silence. I ask that for today's moment of silence, we remember those who lost their lives in the senseless violence that we saw all over in Buffalo. And we just remember them and their and their family members. With that, we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll move down to public comment for agenda items only. It's great that we have a good amount of people in the audience today. We haven't really seen that since we started going virtual. So if there's any members of the the public that have any public comments, please come up to the microphone or the podium, excuse me, and state your name and address. I went out of order there, so I will just say that there is no public comment and we'll move up to 5.1, the agenda. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, I'll just give the opportunity, if there's any public comment for agenda items only. Now that we adopted the agenda, seeing none, we'll move down to the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the May 9, 2022 meeting?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to presentations. It's a very exciting evening with the presentations that we have, especially for this first one. So 8.1, the Historic Preservation Award from Delaware County, Barbara Marinelli, Chair of the Delaware County Heritage Commission.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Marinelli. I am the chairman of the Delaware County Heritage Commission. The Heritage Commission was established by the county council in 1977. Our mission is to support organizations and municipalities within the county to promote and preserve our cultural legacy. We, I am here to present the Historic Preservation Planning Award for the townshipship's creation of their historic preservation ordinance. Historic Preservation and Planning Award category recognizes efforts and planning to preserve Delaware County's heritage, including preserving buildings, complexes, archaeological sites, and community character. Examples include surveys, ordinances, creating historical commissions, national register nominations, and municipal stewardship. This was a collaboration between township supervisors and Newtown Square Historical Society. This accomplishment is no small task. The township of Newtown has seen extensive development over the past decade. I'm glad they took the steps to preserve and promote historic structures and properties and to consider alternatives for them and thus delaying or stopping their potential demolition. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I should note that there was a award ceremony that took place a few weekends ago. Unfortunately, that also fell on the day of our former solicitors services, so the township was unable to be there, but we appreciate you very much coming out here this evening and presenting us with that award. Do you actually have an award to present?
Yeah, Vince has.
Vince has the award. Okay. I don't know who Vince is, but I'll get it from him. You want to do a picture? Might as well do a picture. Let's do it. All right, with that, we will move to. Eileen, do you actually mind if I bump you to the last one and have the residents do their presentations first?
Don't mind at all.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to the Trails and Greenways Trail Oversight with the chairman of the Trails and Greenways Committee, Mr. John Custer.
Good evening. I'm John Custer, Chair of the Trails and Greenways Committee. We had our first meeting on August 23, 2021. So we've been in business less than nine months. We're composed of nine members. All members work full time and still were able to accomplish a lot in a short period of time. The first slide shows what we've done to date. Can you get that up there? Yep. Yep. Okay. Community trail walks. Thanks to Terry McCarthy, we've had an amazing six trail walks in our nine months of existence. We had large crowds for all events. We walked the Meadow Trail once, twice, first time in a blinding rainstorm in November. I don't know who else has been in it, but that was a damp day. Surprisingly, most people finished. We walked the Goshen Trail in December, and there will be a second walk on June 4 at 9:00 a.m. In each of these walks, we were very privileged to have the Historical Society provide refreshments at the John West House. The walk at Garrett Williamson in March was one of our highlights. We arrived just after the birth of baby lambs, which are indeed a sight to see. I think Mr. Altieri could verify that, having held them. We had a walk in Gable Park, followed by an excellent art talk at the library by Beth Dunsisha of our group. Her photos were absolutely breathtaking. We also participated in working township in a hiking cleanup at the Newtown's Fennel Park. Township was awarded a PennDOT multi-modal grant of $650,000 for implementation of the trails and sidewalks. At the request of the township, Amy Blake Griffin and Beth Dunsisha reviewed various alternatives and recommended that the funds be used for a sidewalk along Ellis Avenue, which was approved by the supervisor. Terry McCarthy provided the Trails Committee information for Sustainable Newtown Square and has written trails-related articles for each township newsletter. Anthony D. Vincenzo, with help from others, has begun to review developer plans from a walkability standpoint. Recommendations the supervisors have made for the Stony Mill development and will be provided for two agronomic projects. Member Joe Falcon has been appointed to rail trail feasibility study and is functioning in that capacity. Anthony D. Vincenzo, together with Supervisor Mary Altieri, made a joint presentation to Newtown's present of Newtown's President and Future Trails at the 2022 Trail Summit. This was very well received. Any questions on that aspect? Go forward to priorities in the next 12 months. Our committee has come up with a list of five priority projects, which it hopes to accomplish in the next 12 months, as shown in the next slide, in no particular order. First off is the official map. Official map was created under Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code to allow municipalities to target private land easements for potential future acquisition or use by the municipality. In this case, Newtown Township would identify land and easements at which to acquire by placing the map. And after a public hearing, filing that map in the Delaware County Recorder's Deeds Office. When the property owner begins the process of developing that property, the township will have up to one year to negotiate with the owner to acquire the land or easement before development can begin. And this is one of the best tools available for a township to acquire open space and easements. Anthony D. Vincenzo, with help from Joe Falcon and myself, is in the process of preparing the official map. Following approval by the committee, Anthony will be making a presentation to the supervisors in the near future. Trail signage project has been undertaken by Beth Dunsisha to install signage at all township trails. The first sign. Trail supervisors are currently in negotiations with SAP for an extension of the Goshen Road Trail through SAP property. And if that negotiation proves successful, it is anticipated that the Trails Committee will have involvement going forward. Meadow Preserve Access, a master plan for the design of the Newtown Meadow Preserve, was approved in 2018 and envisioned that access to the preserve would be substantially enhanced. Trails Committee will review the various alternatives for access and present their findings and recommendations to the supervisor. Finally, there's a temporary Meadow Preserve Trail Extension. The Trails and Greenways Network Plan included a temporary trail to be constructed from the trail in the Newtown Meadow Preserve across Solicitor Property to connect with Springwater Lane and Echo Valley and Overlake to Echo Valley Lane. This extension will allow a loop trail to be created encompassing the Goshen Road Trail, the Solicitor Trail, the Meadow Preserve Trail, and to Echo Valley Street. This trail will be in temporary use until a permanent trail is created through the Solicitor Woods from the Meadow Preserve Trail, Goshen Road. Aaron Cook is preparing this proposal and, following approval from the Trails Committee, will present it to the supervisors. Any questions? Next, we're on to Friends of Marple Newtown Trails. At the latest Trails Committee meeting, Friends of Marple Newtown Trails was recommended to the supervisors to perform trail maintenance work and such other trail-related services as may be approved by Newtown Township. It's anticipated that prior to the performance of any work, friends will receive instruction from both Public Works and the Trails Committee. I have here with me tonight Doug Joom, Chair of the Friends of Marple Newtown Trails, who will provide a short presentation.
John, before you turn it over to Doug, I just want to say that, and you noted this in the beginning of your presentation, that the first meeting that the Trails and Greenways Committee had was August 23 of 2021. And I just want to commend you and your board for the amount of work that you all have done in just one year. I think it's quite frankly remarkable the amount that you all have accomplished and the excitement that you've created. I know that all of us have taken part in those walks over the last year. And Supervisor Roberts Lycap and I were in that monsoon. I think we started with 50 walkers. It was the first walk we had and we ended with maybe like eight. But, you know, I think my clothes are still drying out from that, but besides.
It'd be good to get into the John West House.
Yeah, it was nice to get in there. But I think it is remarkable and I appreciate the energy and the excitement that you and your entire group have brought to this project. As I've noted time and time again, the expansion of trails and green space is not only a priority of this board, it is a priority that has been identified in the strategic plan, and you have made that priority a lot easier to tackle. And so I want to thank you publicly for your leadership on this board, as well as the other individuals that are with you.
I thank you very much. I think most of the energy is from the younger members as opposed to me.
I know, John. I have trouble keeping up with you, so I think it's you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I have a lot more news since I last talked to you. You know, the Friends of Marple Newtown Trails, it's a Facebook group. We're not organized, we're not incorporated. Where he's the brains of the outfit and we're like the Department of Labor. When he asks us to do things, we put out the word and hopefully people show up to do these cleanups. So yeah, at this point, we have 373 members. We're about seven or eight years old. Next up, there's some of our friends. There's a lot of groups doing trails these days and are concerned about the watershed, save marble green space. There were Derby Creek Valley Association, Crum Creek Neighbors, Friends of Haven for Trails. There's a lot, lot going on in trails in the region and everyone's building their own, but at some point they're all going to be connecting in and we're all going to be connected. Some of our events, a lot of the Delaware County Parks people had never been to their new park, which is the woods behind, 200 acres of woods behind Don Guanella. So in February, a group of us took them through and just showed them a little bit of it. It's it's 200 acres and the trails are all in there. The kids have been making trails there for 100 years, so it's crazy, but we look forward to the what the Delaware County is going to bring to it, particularly parking. We also participated at the Garrett Williamson hike. As I said, it brought a lot of people in, you know, Garrett Williamson is always looking for support for their great programs. And they have a lot of trails there and a lot of ruins, so it was a, as I said, allow the community to sample some otherwise forbidden fruit. Because right now they're not public trails, but that day they were. So that was, that was a good day. And then for National Trail Day, we did a cleanup and again in the Don Guanella Woods, we had about 40 or 50 people come out, handed out trash bags. A lot of people brought their own carts. If you can go up one more. And this was just our one little group, the group that went east. There was a group that went center. There was a group that went west. But this is, this was pulled out of the woods in just a few hours, our tires, shopping carts, car bumpers, all kinds of stuff. John, in addition to being the brains of the outfit, is up there on the, on the upper right with the with the no dumping sign, like the it's our, our version of the Iwo Jima picture. And yeah, you know, from, from seven years ago, we were, we were glad to help drive people to the, the planning for the trails. So much has been done in seven years. It's wonderful. So we thank you for building the trails or authorizing them and supporting them. And if you need us, just call us and we'll see who shows up that day.
Okay, I appreciate that. And unrelated to what you just presented, but related to the last award, I think that it goes without saying that we appreciate your guidance with that Historic Preservation Ordinance. You know, Tina and I have worked with you and John as well. I should throw you in that too, John. So it's just coincidental that you're all presenting tonight at the same time that we get that, the recognition from the award. So thank you for what you're doing with the Friends of Newtown, Marple Newtown Trails, but more importantly, as the last presenter too, I want to thank you for your, your assistance on that.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for John or Doug? Does that conclude the presentations, gentlemen?
Yeah, I think hopefully at the next meeting, we'd request a consideration we prove of approval of friends be placed on the agenda.
Grants? We always like free money, John. I'll put grants on whenever you want. Thank you very much, John. Thank you, Doug. We'll now move down to 8.4, the Street Trees Presentation. Mr. Paul Seligson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I only have two handouts, so I'm sure this. So my name is Paul Seligson. I'm from 4727 Westchester Pike. I don't know, now it's 4727 Mill Hollow Lane. We changed the street. And I'm the chairman of Newtown Square in Bloom. I'm also joined tonight by the vice chairman of the Shade Tree Commission, and that's Tom Tomasco and Carol Wagner, also on Shade Tree Commission. And the reason for this whole event is to ask your permission and to bring you up to speed of what we're doing with Shade Tree. This is street trees along Westchester Pike. And I was tasked, I have a sequence and I sent you my sequence. And in the sequence, I was tasked to go before the Shade Tree Commission and present to them the map of Westchester Pike, which Rob Vanacola and I have walked. It took us two hours and then we made the little, we made the demarcations of where we saw the possibility for street trees. Now, we made 66 location stops. We're thinking we're going to end up with perhaps 50 because there's going to be landowners that say no, there's going to be PennDOT right away that doesn't allow it. And there's also going to be problems with the existing utilities. So we're going for more, but we're expecting less. So we're expecting roughly 50. So why are we, you know, I mean, I just want to review, why do we consider street trees as sort of important? And I'm going to let both Tom and Carol sort of express what they think. But, you know, off the top of my head, it strengthens our MS4 commitment. Our MS4 commitment relies on 1,000 trees being planted in Newtown Township by the end of 2026. And this would help that along and it would help model that to citizens. It would also help with the stormwater issue. It would, it could help calm traffic. And it has shown, there is evidence that trees and vegetation and greenery promote patronage to shops and professional services. So people are inclined to go slower and they're inclined to stop when there's trees. And it also would make Newtown Square visually really, really transformative and different from all other communities up and down Westchester Pike and even those on Lancaster Avenue. So, you know, it's to try to show a visible difference, but now I turn it over to Tom and to Carol and let them sort of.
So I'm in agreement with Paul that it will help you to find the township along Westchester Pike. Street trees do add a big benefit.
For the individuals watching at home, can you just state your name?
Oh, Tom Tomasco, Vice Chair of Shade Tree.
And I'm Carol Wagner. I'm Secretary of Shade Tree. And I too have been playing around with some trees for the past 35 or so years. And they're wonderful and they certainly improve the township every time we can plant one. So and we all support, the whole committee, commission supports Paul Seligson's proposal.
Thank you. So so as you can see, there's all, you know, you each you have, or you, you have two of these, which are these, it's the narrative and it details all the dots. So every dot is numbered and then on the narrative, there's a corresponding like 1, 2, 6, 10, 14, whatever it goes up to 66. With the 252 trees, you know, we planted trees on 252 and the Township Public Works has been watering them. They watered them twice a month in the first year, which was last year. And once a month, this year, it will be watered, but we haven't even started yet. Oh, we did one. Okay, thank you. So what we're, and you know, George, I'm probably going to ask you about how long it takes and man-hours and that sort of thing. We have planted 25 trees, 252 north and south. So let's say 50 trees is double. So, you know, it's whatever the time it takes to fill the tree gator bags with water twice a month, first year, once a month, second year. And we would, we would like to plan the end of November, beginning of December. No water necessary this year. It would be the beginning, it would be 23. So it would be like, for instance, once a month, once in April perhaps, twice in May, twice in June, twice in July and August, maybe once in September. That's it. Am I saying that right? More or less. So it's probably eight instances of watering. I mean, that's what we're looking at. Do you want to say how much time you're spending on the watering these days, filling the tree gators?
We're chair, it's director of public works. So it, the first time that we did it this year, it was about a three-hour run to go around to all the locations.
And how many, how many, so just the three hours was for what, 25 trees?
For 25 trees, right. So that's getting the truck, filling it up, driving around to the 25 locations, filling them, coming back. And that's two P, that's a two-person job. So that's three hours per person. Correct.
So the question becomes, how does the board feel about that? And should I move forward?
Did you say, I might have missed it. Did you say what type of trees you were?
We haven't discussed the species yet. You know, we've had great success. The trees that you see on 252 North and South, they were all specified by PennDOT. I asked PennDOT the last time, the last go around, for the most warrior-like trees that they had. Exhaust, you know, exhaust resistant, drought resistant, salt tolerant, doesn't grow larger than 35 feet. And what you're looking at is PennDOT suggested. And they've, and they've come along pretty well. I mean, there's one crab apple that looks like it's not doing well, but the rest of them are all healthy. So it'd probably be the same kind of. So it'd probably be the same kind of tree. So there's only four crab apples. Uh, there's Japanese cherry, there's, um, I don't have the, the list right off the top of my.
Oh, so they're all different.
So there's a variety.
It's a variety. It's, it's a, it was four or five different species that PENDOT suggested. European hornbeam, they grow like this. There's some of those. There's cherries in front of cavalo. I don't know if you can visualize this stuff. And the rest of them, I can't remember.
And, um, this would be done in coordination with our arborist, the township arborist of location and, and, um, I guess locate, or just to pass it by, by him as well.
He sits on the Shade Tree Commission.
Okay. Well then that's easy. We've got the blessing.
Right.
We trust the Shade Tree Commission.
And the money would come to buy the trees and to install the trees. That would come from corporate sponsors. Uh, Boron is already one huge corporate sponsor, but they've asked me to find perhaps another one. And I'm in the midst of negotiating with the second one. So it would, it would come at no cost. I mean, the trees and the installation would be no cost to the township, but there would be the watering commitment for two years.
We're not concerned as much, I don't think, about the watering as we are, you planting the trees, I think is a great asset.
Yep. Yeah, that makes a, a very big difference, especially on 252, the Boron and, and your, uh, collaboration. It really does, it, it softens that portion of 252 for sure.
Well, thank you very much.
And, and did Lu, did Newtown and Bloom do the medians, I noticed on Westchester Pike?
I think that's being done by BPG.
Oh, okay.
We did the welcome signs.
Okay.
We just did St. Albans Circle.
Yes, I saw that.
We planted 130 things, uh, John Custer. He grew 70 Mexican sunflower seeds. So there was 70 of those that have been planted. And then we bought from Mustardy 60 sun, sun, sunflowers, I mean, yellow sunflowers. You're going to see all that popping around.
That's great. It's really great.
Um, so Paul, I think that without putting words in everybody's mouth, it looks like you have your approval of move forward. Um, it looks like the board is in agreement with, uh, with doing the, the watering for the trees.
Can I ask you a quick question? So what's the process next? I mean, cause I know this is sort of rough in terms of the exact number. And, uh, I kind of like to see, I love those Japanese cherry trees, but you know, I'd like to, I'd be interested in what you are proposing in terms of the species when you get to that point.
Uh, well, next up is either to visit with Shade Tree Commission again and talk about species. And also the kind of communicate that would go to merchants. Do you want to see the communicate that would go to merchants? This is very much drafted. It would be helpful. Or supervisors stationary, or it could be with a paragraph from the supervisors, but it would sure be helpful to have as much as possible.
Well, what I think Paul is that we will take this letter. If anybody has any suggestions or edits, we'll have them send it over to you. Um, so that we're not standing here and publicly discussing them. The one question I do have for our special counsel here is do you recommend taking a vote to ratify anything? Since we're essentially expanding man hours when the, when the watering actually begins? Or do you want to wait until everything's finalized?
We wait till you're actually going to finalize and you have a more specific idea.
Perfect. Are you fine with that, Paul?
Well, we're supporting your watering. Just we need a more direction.
I'm sorry?
Like, cause you might come back to us and tell us there's 50 trees, or you might come back and tell us there's 30 trees or.
We had the concrete.
Yeah. Okay. We're willing to have you have our people water the trees. We just need a little more direction.
All right. Sounds good.
And I, and my thought process is you might want to come up with a budget and say, this is as much as we can do. You know, based on the, the man hour limitations, we have a, a finite number of folks. You might want to have a specific, you know, uh, direction to the public works department. You can devote this much time to this process.
Understood. Any other board members?
I just wanted to ask Paul, Paul, when did you want to get this, I know you're anxious to get started, but, uh, our comments to your letter, uh, if the, if the board is going to add or the township's going to add anything else to this.
So I'm ready to start asking landlords immediately, you know, and I would start with a letter and then I would do it follow up person to person. You know, the, the best way I see would be with a member from the Shade Tree Commission. Or supervisor. But it'll be, I think it's going to go in two phases. There'll be, there'll be, uh, merchants that'll see the immediate, uh, appeal of this and they'll say yes. And then there'll be a lot of people, or there'll be some people who say, I don't know. And then they have to be talked through it. There'll be other people that'll just fold their arms and say, under no circumstances.
Right. So when do you want, I'm sorry.
No, you were about to do the follow up.
Yeah, I was gonna, so when would you like to have this back?
Is, uh, is the first part of June, by June 10th? Is that okay?
Oh, to have these comments back? Oh, I think we can have them back before that.
I would have, yeah.
Yep.
Or lead time.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Reselixson, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Carol.
And thank you, Carol. All right. We will now move up the agenda, 8.2, stream bank restoration, Stan Tech Engineering, Ms. Eileen Nelson.
I am going to do a very brief introduction to, uh, Stan Tech employee by the name of Richard Fingston. Richard virtually joined us. He's, uh, from our Laurel, Maryland office. And he's going to be giving you a rather broad brush overview of stream restoration. We have a project that we are putting together, a proposal for the board as requested, uh, through Greer Park to incorporate some of the park improvements and the pond alterations along with stream, excuse me, along with stream restoration so that we can, uh, comply with the pollution reduction plan that we submitted to Pennsylvania DEP for the MS4 program. And I thought it would be a good time to, uh, let y'all know what it's all about. So Richard, I'm gonna.
Yep.
Let you take over.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, just going to do a quick overview and talk a little bit about, uh, why stream restoration is important. Um, the benefits that can be achieved by stream restoration. Uh, some of our approaches that we take to stream restoration and then give an overview of what you can expect to see with stream restoration from, uh, before, during and after. Uh, and then I've got a number of projects, examples and, and some structure, um, examples to show. Um, but, um, on the first slide, uh, as far as why stream restoration is important, um, a lot of our, uh, urban streams are degraded. They have a lot of stormwater that's uncontrolled going into them and, uh, it's causing a lot of problems, um, that are not really, uh, they're, they're not going to naturally fix themselves. Uh, some of these problems include channel, uh, bed downcutting, uh, widening of the channel and sometimes moving of the channel from one side to the other. In some areas where, um, a channel, uh, it does not have the capacity to move sediment that's coming downstream. Uh, the channel might actually degrade or, or fill in, uh, which causes water to sometimes get out onto pub, public property that, uh, and cause more flooding. Uh, there's a lot of high and unstable stream banks. Um, and then, um, there's flooding impacts overall because a lot of our urban streams are disconnected from what used to be their floodplain, which are now sitting up a lot higher. Uh, water quality is a major issue and part of the reason for the MS4 is, um, sediment nutrient load reductions that are needed. Uh, we also get a lack of in-stream habitat. And with that, the foundational elements of the food chain, such as the insects in the stream, uh, the fish, uh, that everything else starts to eat and then grows through the food chain, uh, starts to disappear. And then we also have tons of infrastructure encroachments, uh, utility impacts, um, private property impacts that occur because of, um, uh, degraded streams. Conservation alone often cannot repair these degraded systems, uh, so we actively restore the streams. So this is what a natural stream system, if you go to the next slide, um, this is what a natural stream system should look like. It's got a well-connected floodplain. There's base flow down in the channel. And when it gets to a one to two-year storm, it'll go up to a bank full flow, which, uh, then starts to send it out onto the floodplain. During really heavy flows, it might get out to the terrace above the floodplain. But generally we try to size them so that everything stays within the floodplain. We'll go to the next slide. Uh, the benefits of, of, um, of having a stable stream reach, um, are, are often, uh, they, they match up with the reasons why, why streams are, are degraded. Um, we want to repair localized channel bed and, and stream bank and stability. Um, and, and then reconnect our channels to these floodplains, which often have wetlands built in, uh, built into them. And then that helps replenish groundwater connections. And then we also can provide flood reduction, uh, which improves the resiliency of our stream systems and helps to address the climate change impacts. I'm sure plenty of people are seeing more frequent and flashier storm events, uh, get out of bank and all. And so if we can restore a stream, we can, we can, uh, handle some of that. We also want to protect the infrastructure. Uh, typically we're finding storm sewers, um, and, and sanitary sewers down in our stream valleys. So we want to protect those from, uh, causing other problems. Uh, park amenities, park amenities, often trail systems, as folks were talking about, can sometimes have, uh, uh, get close to streams and then the streams get closer to the, uh, trails. Uh, so we want to prevent future property loss. Uh, we want to reduce the sediment nutrient loads, um, and improve the water quality. This helps to meet the MS4 pollution reduction plan goals that the, uh, township has been signed. Uh, and then we want to improve aquatic habitat and the riparian habitat, uh, for the food chain recovery. Um, in our stream restoration projects, we introduce native plants, uh, from the tree, the canopy, the sub canopy, the herbaceous and shrub layers. Um, we want to introduce all native species throughout these systems. Um, oftentimes we're introducing pollinator species as well. Um, that also helps to maintain the food web. Ultimately, we're looking to promote sustainable communities and provide public education and community stewardship opportunities. Many of these projects can be, uh, can be done, they're going to be done by a contractor, but oftentimes you're able to pull in the community to help with some of the plantings and some of the other activities. Uh, ultimately we're going to improve recreational opportunities and the aesthetics. Go to the next slide. Um, so when we do a stream restoration, uh, it's a multidisciplinary approach and uses a lot of different folks. It's not just, uh, highly technical, but we also use a lot of artistically talented folks. Um, you know, engineers will, uh, size the channel, hydrologists, geomorphologists, and then we'll get the biologists and the ecologists in to look at the plants, look at the, uh, the habitat, uh, in stream and in the riparian areas. And then we also build in the art landscape architects, because they're the ones that typically are going to put the, uh, the, the look and the feel to it that, um, people want to see, uh, especially in a park setting. Uh, you want to, uh, pull in landscape architects. So our philosophy when we do this stream restoration is to really understand the system. Um, we assess both the stream conditions and the overall watershed conditions. Cause if you don't know what's going on in the watershed, you could really mess up a stream by not sizing it appropriately. Uh, we also want to quantify the risks and the uncertainty of what we're doing. Um, if we don't do something, are we potentially going to cause a problem down the road? We also look at, uh, restoration stream processes, uh, and functions and then try to set a trajectory for stabilization. So in some instances, we may not put the stream exactly where it will be over time, but we allow for some fluctuation. But over time, it's going to be a stable stream. We integrate aquatic biology improvements, often putting, uh, wood in streams, sizing the rock materials so that they create riffles like you see in this photo here, uh, that are good habitat for, uh, fish, um, uh, to feed. Um, and then, uh, we use all of our multidisciplinary skills to, to come up with the design. Our designers are always involved in the field, uh, data collection, because we want them to become knowledgeable with site conditions out there. Um, and then we connect our goals and objectives, uh, of the project to the design parameters and any other studies that have been done. I know with, uh, Greer Park, there's been a lot of master planning work already done and there's other things in the works. So we want to look at all of those elements and make sure our goals and objectives for the stream restoration tie in with the goals and objectives of the overall master plan. Uh, and then we also try to get our designers involved in the implementation of the project for construction observation and management. We want to ensure that the intent of the design is met. And if something needs to be changed in the field, it's a lot easier if the designer's out there to help make that change or direct that change. We also try to work with onsite materials. Uh, if we're taking trees down, we want to use, reuse those trees onsite. Uh, they provide great habitat. You can, uh, you get a lot of, uh, amphibians, uh, underneath of down logs that you put in the floodplain. Um, and then we also use the logs in some of the stream structures as well. Uh, and then we also do a lot of training and education, not only of our team, uh, so that our biologists understand the engineering, the engineers understand the biology and all that. But we also try to educate our clients, we educate the regulatory permitting community, and we educate the public. Next slide. So what can you expect during the construction process? So these are just some photos of a typical construction project of an urban stream. Before construction, you'll see a lot of exposed banks and a lot of downed, uh, trees. And it just really looks like a project that needs to be done. During construction, you'll see a lot of equipment out there. And oftentimes they're going to be putting up, uh, pump around systems so that the, they're not working in the wet where they're sending a lot more sediment downstream while they're doing the construction. But immediately growing, uh, immediately during the growing season after construction, because we put a lot of seed in there, we put a lot of plants in there, it'll be really lush. And then over time, uh, you start to get the canopy trees to come in and it becomes much more of a stable channel, uh, that requires very little maintenance over time. Next slide. So, uh, we could just flip through these really quick, but there's some examples of some of the restoration techniques and some urban projects that, uh, that we've completed. Uh, the first one, uh, bank grading and shaping. This is something you will see in the field when we do our stream restoration. We're, we're ultimately setting the grades and trying to shape the banks, get a little bit of floodplain in there. Um, in some urban settings, we don't get as much floodplain as we'd like, but, um, uh, we do work with the channel. The next slide. Uh, to help tighten that channel up so that the base flow channel is actually, uh, what most people see. We often put branch layering and live staking it. Uh, we don't like to see grass right up to the edges of the channel, mowed to the edges of the channel, because that's probably what caused some of the problems in the first place. The next slide shows if we start to get in really tight areas or we have really steep slopes, we might use soil lifts. Um, sometimes the bran, what's called branch layers, uh, between each lift and, and that gives the vegetation, um, uh, that's needed to, uh, maintain and stabilize those. And then the next slide, uh, we may do riprap protection in some areas, but we try to make it more natural looking. Over time, this is going to grow in with all the plant, planted vegetation, and you're not going to see that riprap like that. We also try to use materials, stone materials that are similar to the native stone in the area as well. The next slide is toe protection and that's often when we're using bigger materials because it's a highly urban stream and, and you've got a highly eroded slope. This is actually more of a step pool sequence, um, for an ephemeral channel. And then the last slide is hardscaping and retainage features. This shows an imbricated wall, uh, that we would build, say there's a, a sanitary line behind that. Uh, the next, uh, project, the first project is Banks Property, uh, that was in Fairfax County, Virginia. Um, it was a similar eroding stream. This one happened to have a park, a B and Park property and have a master plan, uh, that already was established. Um, uh, there was a lot of trees and invasive plants and there was a lot of stakeholders along this project. And the next slide, um, we created more of a land bridge. The next slide, um, we created more of a land bridge where people could actually connect to the stream, uh crossing the stream uh with some of the structures that we built. And we daylighted the stream channel in areas where it was being piped. Um, we did want to minimize the in-stream structures wherever possible. Um, the the these days the cost of rock uh and the destruction um of big rock is really expensive, so we try to avoid that where we can. And then the the next slide shows the after. Um, this is a step pool type system. Um, it did improve downstream flood control, uh and then we did provide construction oversight and as-built survey for this one. Uh, but it maintained a natural park setting. Uh, the next project is difficult run, and this one had severely eroded stream banks. There was park and trail connectivity in this area. Uh, pedestrian and equestrian access. In this one, we had a much tighter area to work with, and we had to do vegetated geo grids um and a lot more riprap uh to maintain this slope uh so that they could still have trail access. And then the last picture, you can see some of the areas where we did um some uh some opportunities for cross-country trail and some crossings of of the stream uh for well, some areas where people could go down and be closer to the stream. I think, I'm not sure if this is the last one. Um, but uh the Me Trumps Creek, um before it was a torn-up stream, you can see all the different uh concerns that are in there. On the next picture, we starred two uh uh large tree species that we were asked to keep on site, but this is immediately after construction. And then the next picture, you can see they're still there. So we can work with park systems and pick trees that we want to work, want to save and uh and try to save those um and and make sure that we're protecting uh very specific trees. Okay, and then the last one is Shade Valley Restoration, another degraded urban stream. A lot of sediment impacting a downstream water quality pond. During construction, you can see the photo, there was a lot of rock in this one because there was a lot of grade to make up. They would, the stream dropped down really fast. And then another picture shows some of the structures that we put in. And then the last picture is three years after construction. This one was uh more uh grass down to the edge, uh but um uh on on we typically try not to do this. That's all that I have. Uh, so if anyone has any questions, uh happy to answer your questions.
Any members of the board have any questions? Ellen, any members of the public have any questions? Ms. Nelson, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, other than I think um pictures worth a thousand words. Um, I could talk about this until I was blue in the face, but it without seeing, you know, actual successes, I don't think anybody would would truly understand, and I just thought it would be a good time to do this.
No, I appreciate it. And and just to kind of bring it back to the the reason why, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why this is being presented tonight is because we're going to be moving forward with this with regard to Greer Park and the revitalization uh project that we're doing down there.
Correct.
Yes. All streams require permits.
They do require DEP.
Yes.
Yes, any any work that you do in those streams. I mean, as as you recall, I believe the pond in Greer Park has a DEP permit. It's one of the reasons that um the township's attention was drawn to its condition. There were numerous inspection reports, and then it evolved into whether we were gonna keep the pond or get rid of the pond. We did a study probably in 2015, maybe that long ago. Um, and then that evolved into the grant for the whole master plan for the park. So I'm sorry. Yes, you do need permits for any in-stream work. It does require DEP to sign off before any construction is done.
And and the Corps of Engineers.
And the Corps, yeah, it's a, it would be a joint permit.
What is the timing on these permits to fix these streams?
We have, um, as with the planning of the Thousand Trees, we have until the end of 2026 to get both watersheds addressed. The plan here is in Greer Park, that would be the Darby Creek watershed. And um the direction I've been provided by the township manager was to incorporate the master plan for the park in the first phase and the stream restoration for Fox's Run from two fifty-two to just through Greer Park, um dealing with a few private properties. But that would um all be lined out in the proposal that we're going to put together as far as the timing.
What's the timeframe to get the DEP permit and the Corps of Engineers permit? Do they have any sense of urgency to get these permits moving if if you're out to two two twenty-four, you said?
Twenty-six.
Six?
Yes.
All right, it's twenty-two now, halfway through roughly. So the question is, are these a year permit? Is it a two-month permit? Is it a three-year permit?
Knowing DEP, I'd say, Rich, you can back me up here. I'd say it's a year.
Yeah, I've seen them um be shorter depending upon um uh the goals of the project and and their buy-in. Uh, one easy, one way that we involve them early is to have a pre-application meeting out on the site. Once we have a concept design, uh, we present the concept design, we get their buy-in that they're going to permit that type of project. If uh if they have comments, we pick those up early and we'll make revisions to our design accordingly if we find that it's likely not going to get a permit. But generally, uh, for the Corps, it falls under nationwide permit and uh uh DEP is used to the seeing these types of projects. So um it it's not a surprise really for them.
Um, I think added to that is the uh permit that we have in hand that requires the pollution reduction so that we're not doing this just because we're doing it, you know, in in a way for permit compliance. So I think that helps with DEP.
I understand that, but if it takes a year to get these permits and we have various projects, the question is, are we working, how, the next question is, we're not going to do everything at one time, right? Or phased process. So the ones, I guess, we're already permitting, the ones we're planning on doing in the near future?
When when you're talking about the ones we're planning on doing. Greer Park is one that, as I mentioned, when we put the proposal together, you'd have a timeline in that proposal that we anticipate. Um, for permitting, does uh or design permitting and construction. We currently have general permits in for the Echo Valley culverts um because we need permission from DEP to those. So that's already been submitted to them, gee, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. We're waiting on those to be, and they won't take a year. They're general permits that are supposed to be processed much more quickly. Um, but the extent of work for the stream restoration would require, as Richard said, a joint permit with DEP and the Army Corps. Okay?
Any other questions from the board? Any other comments, Ms. Nelson? Thank you very much, Rich. I appreciate the presentation, and we will now
Thank you.
Next agenda item. Uh, section nine, appointment to boards and commissions, nine point one. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment to the Newtown Square Branch Rail Trail Committee, open position, Mr. Charlie Lister?
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor uh Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to section ten, reports. Report from the Police Department. Chief Lon, do you have anything you need to add or supplement?
Good evening, Chris Lon, Chief of Police. Uh, last week, we went through our year three uh assessment for Kalia accreditation. Um, you were notified, we got a verbal notification today that uh everything went quite well. And uh your final report should be due in another week or so, but they found us in compliance with all their accreditation standards.
Awesome.
Um, how are we doing hiring of the new officer?
Um, we are away tomorrow. He is scheduled for a medical uh exam, and that's the last step since uh everything goes well with that, we'll be uh ready to bring him on board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. We'll now move to uh ten point two, report from the Fire Department. Chief Everloff, do you have anything you want to supplement? We're two for two. George, you better have something ready.
Yeah.
You really want me to?
No.
I'm here, love, I'm fired. I want to take the opportunity. Also be.
All right. Do you also want to just mention the ladder dedication and building dedication?
Yeah, so uh.
Thank you, Chief, and I think I speak for the board when we say that coming up with the money for an organization that does so much for this community is is an easy thing to do. So thank you all the dedication that you have to Newtown Township. Well, now move down to ten point three, report for the Public Works, report from the Public Works Director, Mr. Sharik, do you have anything you want to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Ten point four, report from the Building slash Codes Officer, Mr. Rescheck, anything to add or supplement? Seeing none, we'll move down to ten point five, report from the Finance Director, Mr. Lafayette, anything to add or supplement?
Yes, I would just like to make one quick announcement. Um, we're holding uh two budget workshops, budget workshops, one at three o'clock and one at seven o'clock on June seventh. We're looking for uh some public feedback about what they would like to see in their 2023 budget, so we really um trying to get some attendance this year.
What are those times on the seventh?
It is three o'clock and seven o'clock on June seventh.
At the Township Building?
At the Township Building, yes.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Lafayette? Seeing none, ten point six, report from the Library Director, Ms. Caruso. She online to add or supplement? Seeing none, we'll move to ten point seven, report from the Township Engineer, Ms. Nelson.
I apologize, there wasn't a written report. Um Glendale Road has been completed, and we submitted the completion report uh to Delaware County Conservation District. They came out and did a final inspection with us last week. Um, Green Valley, North Line, and the Township Building sewer repairs. We received word today that the contractor is expects to start on May thirtieth. Um, they do have set by our notice to proceed a completion date of June twenty-eighth, whereby if they're not completed both projects, they will start paying liquidated damages. Uh, the line striping bids, we've received approval from Delaware, or I'm sorry, Pendop Municipal Services and um with communication with Public Works Director, we'll be setting up a meeting uh with that contractor to go over the project before they begin. As I mentioned previously, the Echo Valley culverts, we've submitted the general permit uh number eleven for those six locations. Um, and hope to hear back. The bog turtle habitat was cleared um which allowed us to submit for that application. Uh, Northwood, Delmont Storm Sewer Installation, the existing conditions plan is completed, and we are underway with design. Um, and we are nearing completion of the existing conditions plan for Sawmill and Aspen Roads. And once we do, we will have a meeting scheduled with the Parks and Rec Committee. That completes my report.
Thank you very much.
I do want to add one thing.
Yep.
My last meeting before retirement, and I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to serve and quite an experience I'll never forget.
Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. I think we all wish that we could retire at the age of forty like you, Eileen, but now we gotta keep on going. All right, we'll move down to ten point eight, report from the Township Manager, Mr. Lafayette, do you have a report for Mr. Nice?
I do not.
All right, section eleven, budget adjustment, eleven point one. Can can I get a motion to approve the budget increase twenty twenty-two dash oh two, increasing the capital budget as follows? Increasing revenue account thirty dash three hundred dash zero zero dash two seven nine uh point zero zero, use of fund balance by eleven thousand, increasing expense account thirty dash four five four dash ninety dash four two six point zero zero. Parks trash recycling systems by eleven thousand. The increase will come from the use of committed fund balance. These funds will be used to purchase the remaining trash recycling containers that could not be purchased in twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion?
Actually, I do too. Go ahead.
No, you go first.
Um.
Yes, so they are the the trash and recycling containers that we were replacing throughout the park and trail system. We started last year uh due to the uh purchasing requirements and and the fact that they were not Co-Stars. Uh, we we were only able to purchase a certain number of them last year, and we are uh finishing them out this year.
George, um, we went on the walk uh from uh Goshen Road, followed two fifty-two to the Meadow. And I understand that Lister, um, they turn that over to the township, correct, eventually?
The the Lister Trail is going to be turned over to the township. It has not happened yet as as I'm aware.
Will they? Um, I'm sorry.
It has not yet happened.
There are no um uh uh dog uh receptacles along that. Um, is that part of what they give us, or do we have to install that?
I I
Not dog receptacles, but dog waste, sorry.
Yes, exactly. So
Not through the dogs' way.
Yeah, the dog waste receptacles and and as well as trash and recycling.
Yes.
I believe that's going to be part of the discussion when the dedication takes place as to how exactly that's going to happen uh due to the the nature of the way the easement is set.
Okay, thank you.
I know there had been discussions about the need for them though.
I think that was the one thing that came up in when we were walking the trail. Everything else, I mean, it it's a great, it's a great walk. It really is. And and Goshen, you guys are doing doing a great job because I know it's difficult in some of those sections. They get washed out, but of course, you guys do a wonderful job. So thank you, George.
Thank you.
All right. Any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, payments, twelve point one. Can I get a motion to approve the four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cent escrow release payment to Dwayne Family Enterprises at eighteen Clover Lane for a completed planning project? Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point two, can can I get a motion approving the two hundred and seventeen dollar and fifty cent escrow release payment to Flint Talk Development at thirty-five thirty-seven? I guess it's supposed to be Kaylee Road for a completed grading project.
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point three, can I get a motion approving the one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollar and twenty-five cent escrow release payment to Mr. Zhang at one-on-one Tanglewood Lane for a completed grading project?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen, bills. I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two totaling ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Motion was made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section fourteen, new business. Fourteen point one, can I get a motion approving the sale of the decommissioned vehicles and equipment for a total of ninety-seven, excuse me, forty-seven thousand? Fourteen point one, can I get a motion approving the sale of the decommissioned vehicles and equipment for a total of ninety-seven, excuse me, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars as presented on the agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Robert Lake Cap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is your mic on?
Communication to come in down if the board got it, because it just came in today, there was just one individual regarding the Mack truck. We said, hey, I tried to bid and I wanted to bid higher for the Mack truck, I think two thousand dollars higher roughly. He said that the the system didn't work or the system didn't let it do it. You can't sell it to him outright, you could always reject bids, put it back on. And 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 then he doesn't have to bid either, so you could get lower and you have to, you know, have the cost of advertising and everything else. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that because I don't know if you saw that.
So I did not see that, and so my question to you, Mr. Score, is in your, what is your legal advice with regards to this? Do you want us to pull that one now?
Well, I mean, if if anyone's inclined to treat that one differently, I would pull that one out and treat it separately. If nobody wants to make any change, I just leave it in the list. But the your two choices would be reject the reject the bid for that one, rebid it out, or just let this or accept the bids as they are.
What does the board want to do?
I accept. But I mean, we want to waste time, just get out of the way.
Whatever the board wants to do, so if you want to stick with it?
Yeah, you can't just sell it to the guy because he says I want to go two thousand higher, you'd have to rebid, you might not bid again, you might have the same computer problem.
All right, the consensus sounds like if we're going to keep it. So the motion has been, who made that motion, Ms. Valanin? It was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis, I believe. Excuse me, by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, so everybody's fine continuing? Any other board discussion? Thank you very much, Mr. Score, by the way. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, fourteen point two. Can I get a motion authorizing staff and special counsel to prepare and further negotiate the contract with Simone Collins to include the additional recommendations to Newtown Square Branch Rail Trail Committee?
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Falcon, I know you're in the back, Mr. Falcon is the Chair of the Rail Trail Committee, do you want to add anything before we vote on this? Seeing none from him, is there any board discussion?
Can you just explain exactly what we're releasing? Does Simone, I'm sorry. Yeah, this way, anybody who's, yeah, anyone from the public who does, who's not familiar.
So essentially, our committee was was commissioned and convened in March twenty twenty-two. Essentially develop, approve RFP for the rail trail development between Greer Park and Brookside. And essentially, this was strictly just from a feasibility study. Nothing's been approved to move forward with it. So essentially, based off the approval of the RFP, there was originally five members of our group, we're down to four now. I believe you guys.
We just added.
Added, been an active person today. And the the expectations were, based off that criteria, I best, based off the RFP, we're going to approve, you know, one of two bidders or proposals based off certain criteria, this criteria that we're most concerned with, community engagement, transparency and likability. And as of between the two vendors that we we reviewed, we also interviewed them with Simone Collins and Herbert Roland Grubik with Campbell Thomas, the joint effort between the two. Both were well qualified around the same bids. We decided to move forward with Simone Collins based off of their proposal for community involvement, communication, et cetera. Well, it may be approved by ninety percent of the people within the community, it was very much important for the board that there was enough time and effort based off of the individuals that live within that area that would be affected.
Great, thank you for the explanation, appreciate that.
Any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fourteen point three, can I get a motion authorizing Rich Lafayette, Finance Director slash Assistant Treasurer, to sign all documents associated with vehicles and equipment sales, as well as any documents that require a notarized signature during Township Manager's time away from May twenty-third through June fifth, twenty twenty-two?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point four, Consider authorizing Suzanne Valanin, Assistant Secretary, to sign any documents that require the Township Manager's signature that does not need to be notarized during the Township Manager's time away from May twenty-third through June fifth, twenty twenty-two?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to section fifteen, Old Business, there is no old business, section sixteen, Resolution of Legislation in Action. Sixteen point one, Consider approving resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Program Grant Application, Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap.
May remind me that be resolved that the Township of Newtown Delaware County, Pennsylvania, the applicant hereby requests a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program GTRP grant of a hundred thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for repairs and improvements at Drexel Lodge Park, including repairs to the pavilion and to the upper pond walking bridge and replacement of the gazebo. Be a further resolve that the applicant does hereby designate Leonard B. Altieri, the second or the third Esquire Chairman and Stephen M. Neese Township Manager slash Secretary as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township of Newtown and Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Thereby resolve Board of Supervisors Newtown Township. And that's my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, seconded by Supervisor Russo, is there any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to section seventeen, Board Comment. The only board comment that I have is to again, thank you, Eileen, for your years of service to Newtown Township. I think that I can speak for myself and say that this date came up a lot quicker than I thought it was. And so I apologize for not having having anything else for you right now, not a lot going on.
I'll be here till June tenth.
All right, good, good to know. But thank you again, in all honesty, I mean, it's been a fun ride from the time on the planning commission to where I, you know, now being a member of the Board of Supervisors. So thank you for your service to the township, I appreciate it. Any other board comment? We'll now move down to public comment, I do want to note that the Township did receive an email from a resident who addresses cut off of this. But Mr. Sarsanello, who lives on, I believe, Rockwood, Candlewood. Mr. Sarsanello, who had a who who had a public comment with regards to the Stormwater article that he read in the In-Community Magazine. I just wanted to make sure that that, I failed to note that at the beginning, that that we did receive that in the public comment email box. Barron Road, excuse me, Mr. Sarsanello on Barron Road, the subject matter had to do with the article, he had questions with regards to the with regards to the Stormwater article in the In-Community Magazine. All right, any other board comment? Excuse me, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, nothing for the next agenda as of right now, and we will get a motion to adjourn. Thank you all very much.
So moved.
It's done.